The city of Dexter, Michigan. If you're out in the, one of the townships, you, you know, give me that. I don't need to have your street address or what room you're in in the house, but. So we'll start with Matt. That one we did with the first compliment. Um, we'll start with Matt. Okay.
Okay.
Matt Kowalski.
Attending virtually in the city of Dexter.
Okay. Tom Phillips.
Attending virtually in the city of Dexter.
Marnie is going to be absent. Jim Cardy.
Interviewed.
Do we?
I, I'm now unmuted. Jim Cardy, attending remotely in the city of Dexter.
Good. Whoops, wait a minute, got in the wrong spot. Allison Healy will also be absent. Chet Hill.
That might be, that's muted.
Is muted.
See, maybe.
There we go.
Uh, Ted Hill attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Okay. Kyle Marsh.
Kyle? Is everybody, maybe we should just have everybody unmuted.
There we go.
There he is.
Kyle?
He's still not unmuted, huh?
He was, but it remuted.
Yeah, he was briefly.
I can tell Mike is on, is making the request to him.
Kyle, you should be able to unmute yourself. I didn't, Michelle, was this meeting set up that everyone can?
I, I had made it so that it should be, everybody can unmute themselves.
Okay, yeah, mute and unmute. Okay.
He's unmuted here, I see.
Kyle, are you here?
This is gonna be a long night.
Kyle, are you here and where are you remotely coming from?
Hmm. Kyle's muted.
Oh, there it comes off again.
Kyle, can you tell us if you're here and where you're remotely coming from? Okay, Carol, go on.
Yeah, maybe you want.
Right now, we'll assume he's at, at home in the city of Dexter and we'll come back with that. Okay, Karen Roberts.
Um, attending remotely in the city of Dexter.
Jim Smith.
Attending remotely for city of Dexter.
Okay. And we know that, um, Charlotte, uh, Holly will be absent this evening as well as Eleanor King. Aiden Norton.
I'm attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Do you want to try Kyle one more time?
Let's try Kyle again one more time. Okay. Well, I don't even, okay, I see nothing there for a.
There's two Kyles now.
Okay, there's one, okay, you're right. Okay. Okay, roll call Kyle Marsh.
Hmm. Send, send them a chat.
Karen.
Yeah, maybe we can try and, you must be having a technical difficulty. Okay, do you want to follow up? Can you?
Okay, we can see him. We know he's here. You still have a quorum, Matt. We can work it out with Kyle.
Okay, we'd like to proceed. Um, okay, so we will have that figured out and briefly, as you all probably noticed, we do have a new member of planning commission on board tonight. Uh, Chad Hill, we will, um, ask him, once we get through, uh, when we get to our regular business, our reports of officers, we'll just ask him to go a couple minute. So, uh, all right, with that, with the roll call, we have our quorum. Can we have action on the minutes from the regular meeting of October 5th, please? And yes, thank you for, thank you, Jim, for remind, if you guys could still, please remember to raise your hands virtually. Um, if I happen to not notice, just then kind of call out, but that does help, uh, maintain our order when we're speaking. So it looks like, uh, Mr. Smith has moved the, uh, moved the minutes. Do we have support?
Support.
Support, okay, support Roberts. Um, so in discussion of the minutes, changes, amendments?
I have none this evening.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing none, um, so now Carol, are we requesting a roll call vote for all? Okay, so, um.
Roll call for, for, this is an agenda, yeah.
Okay. So can we have a, a roll call vote on the agenda, please? I'm sorry, on the minutes.
Minutes, yes. Cardy?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
He, uh, Phillips?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, the minutes are approved. Um, next, can we have a approval of the agenda? Can we have someone move the agenda, please? Uh, see Mr. Smith move? Do we have support?
I'll support.
Okay, support Roberts. Um, any changes, additions, subtractions to the agenda? Yes, Michelle?
So, um, you received two emails from me today. Um, one was Marnie Smith's comments, which have been posted as supplemental. And the second one was comments from Kyle and my responses. Um, those have not yet been put on supplemental, but they will tomorrow. Um, because they came in later in the day. Excuse me, so if we can just enter those into the record.
Okay, we'll have those entered the record at this time. Thank you.
Want those communications or?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah, add it under communications, please. So, uh, with that, Mr. Smith, are you, uh, since you moved the agenda, you fine with that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Roberts?
I'll support, yeah.
Okay. Um, can we have a vote, please, on the agenda as amended to add the additional communications, please?
Yes. Phillips?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Ari?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, so we have the agenda. Um, public hearings is next on the agenda. We have no scheduled public hearings for tonight. Um, item five, pre-arranged citizen participation. We have no pre-arranged citizen participation tonight. Um, non-arranged citizen participation. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to, uh, speak on any item before the planning commission. If you would like to do so, please, I always forget this, it's star nine to raise your hand on the phone. I don't necessarily, I don't think I see anybody, but we'll put that out there. If, um, anybody would like to say anything, please hit star nine, but really only see us unless I'm missing somebody. I don't see anybody else on that, okay. All right, then, um, moving right along. Reports of officers. Um, chairman report, I would just, uh, like to welcome our new commissioner, uh, Chat Hill. So I know he brings a, a lot of great experience and, uh, welcome now to the board, so. Um, and with that, uh, item B, planning commissioners and, um, Commissioner Hill, if you'd like to give us like a brief, uh, minute, you know, what, what interests you or what, what brings you aboard?
Yes, what interests me is, um, is Dexter.
Perfect, perfect answer.
I mean, we've, we've, we lived in town here in the seventies and then moved back into town in two thousand and four. And, uh, back when we lived in town earlier, I was actually on the planning commission back then and also on the, um, parks commission and on a DDA. Um, so, that was a long time ago. Um, but it was a whole lot less formal than it is now, that's for sure. Um, I, I have a background in landscape architecture, had my own firm. Um, mostly retired from it now, Johnson Hill Land Ethic Studio in Ann Arbor. And I worked for the city of Ann Arbor in the Parks Department for fifteen years as well. So, um, the, the planning commission has interested me, uh, ever since I've been here. And, uh, finally, I'm here I am, so I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you, welcome aboard. Okay, um. Well, sorry.
Always welcome.
Yep, yes, thank you. Um, any other commissioner would like to share anything at this time? Um. No other hands raised, okay, we will go, uh, over to, oh, sorry, council ex officio, um, Mr. Smith, anything from council?
No. If you haven't already, remember to vote tomorrow.
Yeah, there's an election? All right. Moving, uh, committee reports. I don't think we have any scheduled committee reports tonight, correct, Michelle? Am I missing anything? Oh, okay. Um, community development office report, Michelle, looks like, yeah, we got a lot of, uh, information in that today.
So you've got my report in front of you and before I go into any updates, do you have any questions for me on the report?
Questions? Michelle, no, um, well, one thing, Michelle, it's, it's not in your report, but I was interested if, if you kind of had an update on our, the, you know, the city manager or like, or actually, maybe it's for also for Mr. Smith. If council, like where, or have they initiated a process for that yet or, you know, kind of what's the latest and greatest on that?
So two things they've decided on. The first thing, and, and Jim, would you rather censure from council?
Go ahead, I'll add.
All right, Jim, I could have.
Okay, cool. All right, um, so two things, first, they have decided to, um, um, have Justin Brier, the assistant to the city manager and city clerk. Uh, step in as the interim city manager and he accepted. Um, and the second thing is to, um, post for the position, uh, to, I believe they did come up with a, uh, job description, um, if I'm not mistaken. And, um, they will be posting for that position. They're, um, um. I don't remember, uh, like what the timeframe is though, Mr. Smith, can you help me with that?
Uh, November and December. Yeah.
So, so.
And that may not be limited to that, you know, that's just to see what the initial posting, uh, gets, what interest.
The interest, yeah.
Yes. So, okay, so those move forward. Thanks, Mr. Smith.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
Um. So you may have seen, if you were downtown this weekend, there are two tents in downtown in the parking spaces. Those are not permanent, those are temporary, they only, um, they give a last little bit of assistance to those businesses before the end of November. When the emergency ordinance that the city is, uh, um, established and the licensing that the liquor control commission approved expires. So, um, after that, if they want to do, if they want to continue outdoor seating in their regular spaces, which would be on the sidewalk. Um, they can do that. Um, at this point, no one has really formally requested to do that yet. Um, there's been some, um, some verbal, um, indication from some of the businesses that they might be interested. But they're, 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 um, they're trying to figure out how they can do that and provide a comfortable experience for their customers. Because you can't put a big tent up over the sidewalk, so, um, this is going to be a kind of a wait and see how this plays out. The city's definitely willing and interested in helping the businesses. Um, but in the end, they have to figure out exactly what they need, um, in order to, um, uh, to, for us to be able to help them, so. So that's where we are with that. Um. I, there aren't really any other updates. Um. We will have our, after the first of the year, somebody's coming in for, Phantom Fireworks is coming in for a, a fireworks tent at the Dexter Cider Mill. Um, we'll have to just wait to see how, what they actually request and how that all goes. Because there are certain rules, obviously, that we have for zoning, but it's the liquor control commission and the building department that really dictate, um, the rules that have to be followed for those, so. Um, and that's it. I echo Mr. Smith's comments, tomorrow's election day, if you haven't already, please get out and vote.
Yes. Okay, thank you, any, any other, any questions for Michelle? Seeing none, all right, uh, moving on to communications, which we did have the additional communications added to the agenda earlier. Um, which relate directly to our business at hand, um, next. So with that, we'll move directly to the old business, which is a zoning ordinance update. And I believe Megan will probably do her presentation at this time.
Up.
Hello, Megan.
Hi, there we go, all right. Um, how is everybody tonight?
Great.
How are you doing?
I'm fine, I'm fine. Um, so there are two things that, um, we have in the packet for you. Um, and thank you so much to Mike, who I think is scrolling to those or just on, just to the item. Um, so we have a schedule, um, and a description of the subcommittee. And the goal for tonight is just to get a little feedback on the, um, on the schedule, it's pretty bare bones at this point. Um, but also to, um, hear from you, um, who would like to volunteer to be part of the sub, so, part of the co, committee. Um, that's going to do the majority of the heavy lifting on this. So.
I, I know we had Kyle, I, you had expressed interest, I believe, in your communication, so. Um, did you? It, how many members were, maybe I missed that, but I don't think I noticed that on the two, three, I mean, what's the most productive, three, four? What do you think, Megan, is the most productive number?
I'm taking my hits from Michelle who's saying three.
Um, and I thought that you all had talked about three would be manageable and possibly, um, one or two from council if that was needed. Um, but it, it's really up to you guys to decide, um, how many you think should be there. Obviously, it can't be a quorum, it needs to be manageable and, um, and it's, and there's got to be a commitment to, um, uh, to participate. And there's going to be homework to do, so.
We had also, Michelle and I also talked about maybe having a member of city council on the committee, the subcommittee as well, um, and perhaps, um, somebody from zoning board of appeals. Um, but, um, just to have the full gamut of everybody who deals with the zoning ordinance and especially with city council. Um, someone who's going to be, um, on the body, who's ultimately approving it, can help bring, bring that group along, although staff does that wonderfully. Um, you know, along the way, so that at the end, um. What I've found is at the end, uh, if you don't have a member of city council pretty well involved or, um, you don't update the city council pretty regularly. You, the planning commission have gone through this long story, right? And all of this work, uh, to, to get the zoning ordinance where you felt it needed to be. Um, and then it's delivered in this package, um, to the city council and they want to unpack it in order to understand it. Um, and so, um, it, again, that helps to have that representative on the, on the body.
Good insight.
Yeah, so with, if we, anyway, want to raise their hand, like you said, we know Kyle kind of.
I'll, I'll volunteer, I, I don't have the hand option, Matt, so sorry, but I'll volunteer.
No, that's okay, a virtual, or a real hand also counts.
Okay, so we know.
That's fine.
So we know Kyle volunteered, Tom has volunteered. Um, we, we would need a third.
I'll volunteer.
All right, Karen, great.
Hey, Karen.
I'm assuming we get pizza if it's a four hour meeting.
Oh, wow, wait a minute.
I'm not sure how, how, I'll, I'll have to figure out how to do virtual pizza.
It's a lot of pizzas.
They all deliver, you know.
Oh, that's easy.
Oh, that's true.
With all the money the city's saving on all these virtual meetings, I would hope that, uh, we could have piles of pizza for everybody.
Yeah, check, sometimes we get pizza at the meetings, you know, well, we were meeting in person, we did, at special meetings, so, bet you didn't know that.
Well, I kind of did, the few that I've been to, when you did have them, I got my share.
So, so how does the planning commission feel about, um, a member of council and, and inviting a member of the ZBA?
I think. Great idea.
Okay.
Megan's made a very compelling argument that you don't want to just dump surprise the council with, hey, look what we've been doing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Zoning Board of Appeals also, because they can kind of see, although it's, I know it's not a very active board, but, um, still probably is a, a good idea.
I think that'd be good, because they're going to know a lot of the issues that crop up over and over and over again, you know, that come to them, so that might be a good site, too.
Mm-hmm, okay, absolutely.
And so we've got our three, but if there's anybody else that's really interested or, I mean, we can all, of course, we're, we're all going to be aware of what's going on there. We have an opportunity to, um, you know, to participate and add our, uh, input at any time. But again, these will be the main members that are kind of focused on, on this idea, or I'm sorry, not idea, but on the, uh, review. So is anybody else really interested? Otherwise, we're, it looks like we're, we've got our three. Okay, and I know, I talked to Allison before and she wasn't interested.
Yeah, I was going to say, unless you wanted to talk to Allison and Marnie before you.
I kind of thought about signing them both up, but, you know, just.
I, I.
That'd give you a quorum, though.
Oh.
But yes, that's true. I don't think Marnie has, um, the, uh, extra time at this particular moment. Um, and Matt, since you've talked to Allison, we won't have to worry about that.
Yeah, I'm assuming.
I will put in my report to council for their meeting next Monday, the request, uh, or the invitation. And, um, Mike has a ZBA meeting, uh, or there is a ZBA meeting and Mike will make the same invitation to the members there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, members, for volunteering.
Um, yeah.
You know, it's a, it's a highly glamorous position, so we really appreciate it. Okay, so Megan, um, is that what you needed on that item?
That's what I needed on that item, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, commissioners, so, all right, so we're going to jump right to new business at this time. Um, which is a text amendment to the zoning ord, ordinance regarding the outdoor services area. So will this be you again, Megan, or Michelle?
Uh, this one, this one's going to be me this time, guys.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I kind of gave you a brief, um, heads up on this. And this was supposed to be a public hearing. Um, and I truly appreciate that you all were willing to, uh, roll with us on the, um, um, the informalness. Um, that this one came to you. Um, unfortunately. The, um, the notice did get to the place it needed to go, but the place that needed to publish it didn't do it. So, um, it, perhaps it's growing pains using a new, um, company. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll be hopeful there, um, but I'm hopeful that this doesn't happen again, because it, this is the second time, so. Um, so what you've got is, instead of it being called outdoor seating area. Um, and it is, it is named three different things in the current ordinance. It come, it's, comes under outdoor seating, outdoor cafe, outdoor eating area. None of those three things are defined in the ordinance, but they are regulated as a special land use. Um, what I've done is I've sort of piggybacked off the city's, uh, emergency ordinance of this year. Where we defined what an outdoor service area was. Um, and it, it, it's a more comprehensive definition. And that can also include retail. And it is, says in the definition that those are accessory to those principal businesses. Whether it's a food and beverage establishment or a retail establishment. Excuse me. Um, one of the other things that you'll notice, that really has nothing to do with outdoor seating. But it was a suggestion made by Marnie at the, uh, with our last, um, uh, amendment. And that was for section two oh one, to have those quotation marks instead of underlying for those special terms. And I believe in, in her email that she submitted in the communique, there are a couple of them that she missed and we'll go through and we'll put those in. Excuse me. In addition to changing from outdoor seating and creating this outdoor service area as a principal use. And one that would get zoning compliance as opposed to coming to planning commission and council for special land use. Um, we had to deconstruct, um, what you currently had, which was, um. Commercial open air businesses, um, or commercial outdoor, I have to look it up real quick. Commercial outdoor storage and open air businesses. And. We were a little concerned that if we left, um, open air business uses as it currently was, that there could be some ambiguity with, uh, with the outdoor seating. And how that's an accessory. And these other ones were, um, uh, permanent uses and require special use. So what we've done is we've created outdoor display for those open air businesses. Those are ones that primarily are displaying for sale, lease, rent, their product or service. The majority of the time, it's going to be the product, not the service. And, excuse me, um. And it's separated very clearly from outdoor display. Um, you could have an open air business. That, I'm sorry, you could have an outdoor display business that, uh, it has sale, lease, rent or exhibit. Um, but those necess, aren't going to necessarily be the same thing as an outdoor storage. Outdoor storage isn't having things out in the yard, so to speak, for sale, lease or, um, um. Sale, lease or, what was the other one? Sale, rent or lease or exhibit for outdoor storage, it's just that. It's the keeping of materials in a not enclosed building. Um, and, uh, other than a trash container for a period of longer than twenty-four hours. So we're really carefully defining the different uses and the different terms. Excuse me. In addition. So I'm using, I'm using the, uh, the sort of the, the, the table that kind of gives the cheat sheet of all of this. Um, when we, when we dissected or deconstructed the open air businesses and the commercial outdoor storage. Um. We found that we needed to make sure that automobile or vehicle dealerships were amended so that they had a clear definition. Um, um, excuse me, and it was not the same as outdoor storage, um, or the outdoor service area.
Michelle, sorry to interrupt. Michelle, sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to, so you're referencing it's on page sixteen of our packet.
Yes, sixteen of your packet.
I just wanted to make sure everybody, anybody was, okay, thank you.
So it's an expanded definition and it's done so that you've got. Um, consistency with the other definitions that were re- that we have created. Or have them have amended. The medical marijuana, the home occupation, that's kind of a cleanup item. Um, we took the use out. And um I missed it in the definition, so um it shouldn't be there, and so we're just taking it out. Um, I've already gone over the open air business uses, the outdoor display and the outdoor service area as well as the outdoor storage. You can see where if it's something that is new, it it'll say new in parentheses. Um, if it's being amended, I've I've identified it that way. And if it's being deleted, completely taken out, it's identified that way for you. So when you go into article three, the only thing we're doing in article three is actually creating. The provisions for an outdoor service area. That's going to include the intent purpose, the permit. And the application requirements as well as those general regulations. Excuse me, many of them come from the old outdoor seating area in the special use section. But they've been cleaned up and refined and um hopefully more concise. Um, both for um for you as the commission, for us as a as administrative staff and. For a business person coming in to utilize it. If you've got any questions or comments on anything as I go through, please raise your hand or or ask me a question. In the special land use section, I've identified each of the subsections and um the title of the use. That's being changed. The accessory out, excuse me, accessory, commercial, outdoor, sales and storage area. Um, it's just getting, it's being deleted for consistency. Everything gets relettered after that. The automobile or vehicle dealership. Um, that's the new term again for the consistency with the amendments. The commercial outdoor storage, uh outdoor sales and storage as a permitted, that's being deleted. Uh, open air business being deleted, the outdoor display is new and. It's, it's in there again for the consistency, the areas of it. You'll notice that some of the some of the regulations are going to be the same. Um, as they were before, but you're not getting all of them because they're not, they don't. They don't transfer on the same plane, if you know what I mean. Okay, I'm trying to keep up on two different pages, so. Uh, open air business deleted, outdoor display is new, that's on page. That's on page forty of your packet. It makes it clear for. The things that are needed as far as regulations, uh so that something that's being developed. Using outdoor display. Uh, the typical health safe, I'm sorry, health, safety and welfare of the community. The environment. And, excuse me, promoting what it is that business would be utilizing outdoor display for. Um, outdoor storage, you, it's the it's the negative impacts of that that you're regulating against. It's what you've always regulated against with outdoor storage.
And thanks, Michelle, for clearing that up for me. I I I kind of think I misunderstood when I wrote.
Okay, um accessory and commercial outdoor sales, I think we've already talked about that. That's um uh being deleted. The auto dealership, so what you've got is you get the list of them. And then in the special use section, you then get the general provisions, so the list is is. Fixed, the general provisions are either amended or removed or new ones created, and that's all identified in the table. In article um fifteen, I'm sorry, fourteen, that's the C one general business. Outdoor service areas, that's new as a principal use. The commercial outdoor sales and open open air business is deleted and outdoor display new is put in. And then um outdoor storage, again, that's new, that's in along with the outdoor display. Those are the special uses. Uh, the showroom and sales of automobiles, displays, et cetera, that very long. Um, title, which is base basically uh an automotive or vehicle dealership. Um, that's been deleted and the term automobile and vehicle dealership has been, replaces it. Yes.
In that particular area there on page seventeen, the fourteen oh three K.
Yes.
You have a typo there for the word.
Yep, I'd say that, thank you.
Sure.
Sales, right?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Excuse me. So the, while that long title for automobile and vehicle dealership is removed. And the new one is replaces it, it still stays in your special use section of the C one district. And then outdoor seating at restaurants, that's deleted and um. It becomes outdoor service area as that permitted use as I previously mentioned. In the village commercial section, um as a principal permitted use, outdoor service area is new. And the outdoors eating area is deleted. And then in the central business district, you've got the same thing. You have the new use, the outdoor service area being created. And the uh special use, the outdoor cafe and eating area deleted. Do you have any questions for me on any of that?
I got one, Michelle.
Yep, I see Jim and Karen.
Uh-oh, on my window, wait a minute, oh god, you go while I try not to have my computer. Um, not do, okay, never mind, that computer suddenly said I'm shutting down. Um, okay, I, a while ago, when Aubrey's first um. They moved their outdoor, what you know, their outdoors seating area, I'm gonna call it, but well, not new term, outdoor service here. They had it, you know, out out towards the edge of the sidewalk and they pushed it back next to the building and. Because they were having problems with, you know, uh people crashing into their weight staff, I think. And I think it was Jim Curry pointed out the drawback to that was fire hazard, that you're blocking, you know, exits. I I thought it maybe this is somewhere else, but on page twenty six that that they're, you know, there's a discussion of. Um, you need a ten foot wide um sidewalk and you can only, you know, excuse me, you have to allow for five feet for pedestrian traffic. Do we, are we not commenting anymore on whether it's right adjacent to the bill, you know, to the place like Aubrey's is? Or out further like St. Dexter Pub?
So i- it's going to um. The location of where they want the accessory um outdoor service area to be is really going to be. Largely dictated by what's in the streetscape. The reason that Aubrey's can have it next to their building is there, it's the sidewalk area, the public walkway there. Is very large and for the most part unobstructed. Um, but when you get in front of the pub. Because we have, it's a, it's only ten foot wide, a little bit more than ten foot wide between the curb. And the building front, the building face. And because you've got street trees in um close to the curb. You wouldn't be able to have the seating area right against the building because you wouldn't have an unobstructed uh walkway. Of five feet in width, so. We didn't. The current ordinance doesn't get into dictating the location of in relation to the face of the building or the the business. Um, it it talks about maintaining the five foot unobstructed pedestrian walkway. And having at least a ten foot wide sidewalk in which to work with. Does that help?
I might add to that, in addition, Aubrey's has the whole front of the building available to them. Whereas Dexter Pub only has really their one build, one width of building. So if they were to have a large seating area, it would block off other businesses. So it has to be away from the building, so it doesn't interfere with all the other businesses along there, I think.
That's true. Mr. Smith?
Yes, um, under uh fourteen oh three K, where you put in automobile and vehicle dealership. Wh- why use both automobile and vehicle? I mean, I looked up the definition of automobile. It's a road vehicle typically with four wheels powered by an internal combustion engine or electric motor. Enabled to carry a small number of people.
Right, but what if you've got trucks or motorcycles, um snowmobiles, recreational vehicles, things like that? The automobile definition doesn't cover all of those. Um, and the way your ordinance um currently is structured is that all vehicles. Um, fall under the open air business, so um consulting. The best definitions from the um um APA's Planner's Definition Book. Um, this is what we came up with. It it takes into account all of the different vehicles. And not just only automobiles.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, either it should be plural or or maybe.
We could do, right, we could do oh, or.
Yeah. Yeah, automobile. Or ship or, you know, or dealerships or some.
Okay, I can put the S on the end of that.
I mean, because it could be one or the other, it wouldn't necessarily be a combined.
Um, it could, right now, um.
It could, but. It could be also separate.
Yes, you're right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, did you have a question? Okay, I thought you were putting up a piece of paper for me to look.
No, I was probably pulling it close so I could read it.
I'm looking for the notes that you had, um. Kyle, did you want to go over your questions?
You know. Answering, um, my my only, you know, I always skew towards aesthetics and, you know, are there any kind of. You know, probably, it's probably kind of a DDA question, you know, but the. They've done such a nice job with the downtown streetscape and things, I mean, are there any guidelines for. What this kind of furniture has to look like?
Right.
These outdoor seating areas.
So, um.
That's all.
It it hasn't been, like I said, it hasn't been prescribed in the past. Um, um. The one thing I think that um. Uh, the one thing we don't want is some sort of homogenized um artificial look that everyone has. But um I do get the point you're making, which is you want a nice, good quality looking um. Outdoor area. Um, and how do we get that without everything looking exactly the same, right?
I think you're exactly right, and there's a delicate balance there, of course. Just a question I thought I'd bring up.
No, I think it's a good one, and it may be something that you guys delve into in more detail. A- and in a broader sense, as you're going through your um zoning ordinance update. Megan, I see you're unmuted. Is there something you wanted to add?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to add that it's unusual for guidelines on um outdoor furniture. Um, to be in um a zoning ordinance like this, you might have um. Some prescriptions on what the fence should look like or the barriers. Um, but where I have seen um the type of thing that you're talking about, Kyle, be successful is when the DDA. Um, ran some sort of program where they um helped to buy the outdoor furniture. Um, or help them to people find vendors um and things like that. Um, so I think there are kind of um other tools to use to get that aesthetic. That maybe aren't as blunt as zoning, since zoning's a requirement. Um, so sometimes that programmatic um aspect um will work a little better.
Certainly. I think that's a great point, and that was actually something I kind of thought like, wow, is there some kind of. Some kind of program or help where it's like, oh, well, this is better stuff and and uh yeah, perhaps DDA is is it, so. Yeah, cool.
For a number of years, for a number of years, the DDA did not have a lot of revenue coming in. Um, after the Great Recession, they had purchased the thirty forty five Broad Street property and then the recession hit. And um they they, they were just barely able to make their um, make their bond payments. With the development of Grand of Grandview and the um uh the development of one fifty Jeffords. And the overall um uptick in the economy, obviously pre-COVID. We're just not going to worry about that as its impact right now in economy. The revenue the DDA is seeing is is i- is very positive. And they may look at doing things like that um in the future. Because they will be looking at updating their strategic plan. Excuse me, because they have completed a a number of the things that they wanted to do in their current strategic plan. But there are some things that aren't identified in their plan and and. Things like marketing, promotion. Even uh buying equipment and renting it to businesses because they can't give it to them, but they could rent it. Um, they haven't, that's never been part of their um uh their plan in the past, but it could be in the future.
We do have that general or that kind of vague language in there that says, you know, um, I was just looking at somewhere, but like, shall be. Uh, oh, maintained in a manner compatible with the principal building site elements, and then we have. Compatible with the architectural character of the building where the OSA is located, so that's on page twenty seven, it looks like of the packet, so. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think that's probably adequate for now. We haven't had a problem, so, um, but it's 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 worth it to note that.
Right, right, um. In addition to Kyle's comments, you had Marnie's comments that were added in your supplemental section. Um, they're mostly cleanup, um grammar punctuation. Um, and we can go ahead and incorporate those. Yep. Did, did you have any questions on any of those?
I do have a, if I could, I do have a comment relative to Kyle's um questions. And your responses to them. One of the the surfacing for outdoor storage areas being restricted to. Concrete or plant mixed asphalt, which I agree with, but I think probably there's more opportunities there. When you, when you start thinking about stormwater runoff.
Yeah.
So concrete or bituminous pavers or porous pavers, I would think would be. Something along those lines will be good to add to that. In fact, would be preferable if they were porous pavers.
Pavers or even um the option for pervious um material. I know there's, I know there's. I know there's, I know there's a term and even though we say this in the. I'll go back to the engineering standards because I know that they have. Terminology in that, that allows for that flexibility. So that not everything is. A parking lot and dealing with all the stormwater.
I do know that porous asphalt or porous concrete, and there is such a thing. Don't work very well in this climate at all.
Right.
That sort of thing I don't think ought to be, or they shouldn't be allowed.
Okay.
Tom, I, I know Tom had his hand up.
Yeah, hello, yeah, I was gonna say, all, all, all the porous stuff needs a very significant base under it. It's a lot more complicated, it sounds, some of them need to be vacuumed out by industrial vacuums periodically because the pores get clogged. I, I would just say, I mean, I don't think we care if somebody wants to do porous paving, but it's not. It's not the magic solution people thought it was ten years ago, so I would just raise a little bit of caution about that.
I mean, it needs to be maintained, you're absolutely right.
It also needs like a two foot subbase below it because it has to be able to drain. Once the water gets through it, it can't just go underneath and set on, you know, clay or something, it'll just blow right off. So, my two cents on that.
Agreed, well, you're right in that sense, but you, it ought to be an option, if a, if a building owner wants to do it, fine. If the soils are good, fine, and by the way, in regards to vacuuming, that's the problem with. Porous asphalt and porous concrete, that's the reason you don't want to do it. But the, when you talk about porous pavers, that's a different story. They're fine, they work good, but they do need that extra base, there's no question.
Okay, thank you both.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else on these? Okay, then we'll put it in for a public hearing for your December meeting. Excuse me.
I mean, I just, I, I, I like the, I mean, going through this, it just makes us, I think, appreciate the complexity of zoning and all those little ripple effects that go. With a simple change and, and how, so all you committee members that volunteered for the, the work on the zoning ordinance, I mean, it's great work, but it's. It's so tricky as you fall down that little hole of, well, then this, 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 so.
No, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right.
Sooner or later, and I think it's better that we take this chunk now and, and work at it, so, but. Very fitting in light of our other zoning updates.
Yep, you're very right, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, so I think, are you all set with that item?
Yep.
Okay, thank you all commissioners, alright, so next on new businesses, the planning commission liaison to the zoning board of appeals. Who, would anybody like to assume that glorious position?
I could do that, I've been the alternate on the VBA for the last four or five years, so unless somebody else wants it. And, and if they do, fantastic, if not, I'll take it.
And it's an arm wrestle. Okay, anybody else?
I, I'm sorry, Kyle, what?
You need a motion on that?
Kyle, if, there's just a whole lot of feedback from you, Kyle.
Alright, I'm not su, okay, well, well, yeah, I think we do need a motion for that, so if somebody would like to support a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chad to the, the planning commission liaison to the ZBA.
This is Cardy, I'll support.
Luke Smith, alright, Jim Cardy, support, I think we probably need a roll call vote, right, Carol?
That's right.
Okay, I'll just get that through my head. Okay, roll call, please.
Hell.
Yeah.
Roberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Marsh. Well, it looks like we've lost him.
Oh yeah, I think he got.
Okay, okay, I'll mark him as the absent then. At this point. Phillips?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, congratulations, Chad. We expect big things from you now.
I like this Chad guy already.
Okay, well, with that, we'll move on to the post this, or, well, it sounds amazing, but December, our December meeting, so it looks like we've. Got, oh yeah, the kennels and pet ownership, I remember we kind of had a little intro on that, I think before we talked about it. And of course, the outdoor services area, that would be the, our public hearing.
Yep.
Anything else that you know? I assume not, otherwise you would have put it on there. Okay, alright.
It looks like, Matt, if I could, it looks like we're going to do the, based on. The schedule that Megan provided, we're going to try to do the. The joint meeting of city council, planning commission, ZBA. If there's no ZBA meeting on December twenty-first, that's the third Monday, that would be that joint workshop to kick everything off.
Awesome.
Okay, so if you all could mark your calendars tentatively for December twenty-first.
Now we, wow, so that would, I'm assuming probably be another virtual.
Yeah.
Though, so that, well, that'll be a little more. Wow, that's a lot of virtual participation.
Yeah, but, you know, between, first of all, I've got the. Highest confidence that Megan can pull this off and Mike and I will support her in whatever way she needs.
We've had a lot of Zoom. Activity as a firm and myself as an individual since April, so. Have no fear, we, we already have a plan, it, it will likely involve breakout rooms.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Is that at seven?
I, I don't know the time yet, Karen.
Okay, um, alright, with that, we have, any citizens wishing to address the commission? I don't see any on the line.
Doesn't look like any.
Okay, so I will assume not and.
Do you want to see if the student rep has anything to say today?
Sure. Mr. Naughton.
I don't really have anything to say, I look forward to seeing what the city does with the outdoor seating. I saw those images that were attached in the emails and I think it looks pretty cool.
Great, yeah, thank you, and again, as Michelle mentioned earlier, if, with the other students who weren't able to attend, I mean, if you guys. Have any ideas between you, please let Michelle and I know and you can definitely bring them up or, or, you know, even at the next meeting. Things that we can discuss that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, so with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
I am, so, oh, so.
Support.
Okay, support Roberts, I, I guess roll call vote on the motion to adjourn, please.
No, we don't have to do that one, bye guys.
We'll only, the agenda, sorry.
Declare us adjourned.
Okay, meeting is, well, wait, we still have to do the all in favor of adjournment, right?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Closed. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you all.
There you go, Chad, it's that easy, well, you already know, I guess, you've been doing it before, so.
Thanks a lot.
Alright, thank you all.
Happy election day.
Hey, Michelle.
Yes.
I, I noticed a quick thing as I looked down at my thing, I spelled my name A I D A N and I saw it was Ian.
Oh yes, we'll fix it, A I D A N, right? Okay, I'll fix it, thank you for letting me know.
Welcome, enjoy your week.
You too, bye bye.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, Mike.